Three, masks must be worn. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. For the record, I just want to state that Mrs. Feather is not here tonight due to illness. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. We have approval of minutes from the special meeting, 9:30, 2021, and the regular meeting, 10:14, 2021. We have approval of... Oh, thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Hold on.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I skipped something by accident. I need approval of the agenda. Motion to approve by someone?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Smith?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogalski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it six to zero. Now, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Approval of minutes from special meeting, 9:30, 2021. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting, 10:14, 2021. Approval of minutes from the executive session, 9:30, 2021. And approval of minutes from the executive session, 10:14, 2021. I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Motion by Mr. De Monica?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogalski and Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it six to zero. The next item is the Personnel Announcement. Mrs. Dunkinson.
Good evening. There's just a couple tonight, or a few tonight. Two appointments. The appointment of Robert Fay, Social Studies Teacher at McCourt, one year only, and Catherine Kershaw, .6 FTE, Social Studies Teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, one year only. Additionally, there is one resignation of Ryan Raffinelli, a Social Studies Teacher at McCourt. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Dunkinson. Next item on the agenda is Report Out of Executive Session Meeting. Report out of Executive Session Meeting on 10/28/2021. Report out of Executive Session Votes. We did not take any votes tonight, but we will be voting later in the agenda. And so I need a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Rogalski?
Second.
Second by Mr. De Monica and Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it six to zero. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Thornton.
Madam Chair, good evening. First, October is National Principals Month. I just want to take a minute to honor our principals. Being a principal in a normal school year is very difficult. Being a principal in a pandemic is extremely difficult. So I think we all know they work hard, but I just want to thank them for their hard work. And we truly have a great team here in Cumberland, so I want to thank our principals. Number two, we have a couple of busing updates. For the first one, I'll go to Mr. Chandler and Mr. Prignano. The first busing item we're talking about briefly is BF Norton Bus Stop Depot. So gentlemen, if you could update the committee on that piece. Thank you.
Good evening. The...we had some discussions with Durham regarding what would it take to get the bus stop depots working at the AM and PM. AM doesn't seem to be much of an issue, however, as they were looking at the runs and how the four-tier elementary drop-offs are, it's creating a problem where they're about 10 or 15 minutes late if those buses were to drop off coming from that last tier as they were coming back from the two middle schools. It looks like the biggest issue would be three buses at Community and one or two buses at Cumberland Hill. So with that 15-minute window, one of the questions that they were wondering if we were trying to get it to work would be to adjust the times at those schools, which we probably need to have more of a discussion around because of the busing numbers that they would be required for, so. You have any questions?
Any questions? No?
On that piece, I would just add, I know in fiscal and in previous meetings, the committee has asked us to have Durham model the shorter walking distances. So in our earlier meeting in fiscal, I did suggest the possibility that we also incorporate in the BF concept in that new equation.
Mr. Collins?
I would just add, during the fiscal update, in a few minutes, we are going to talk about the financial impact of the buses, and we discussed it today at fiscal. So we're following through based on previous conversations we've had on this.
And with that, our second, our next busing item, the committee now has a read, reading rights to a document we have created to comply with the new Durham contract. And I will make one change based on our fiscal meeting, but the current document we have will notate when a bus is 15 or more minutes late. And as you can see in the spreadsheet, you have so far, I have three. October 12th, there was Bus 13 in Ashton. October 18th, Bus 15 at Community, and October 25th, Bus 35 at the High School. But now, in talking in fiscal, I will check the contract on that. If a bus is combined, so we will, if that is the case in the contract, we'll add that to the spreadsheet as well to give you that information. So that's something you now have going forward. Look at that.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up on that as well. The numbers that are being reported now that we have access to see, because the report did have quite a few that were 10 minutes late continuously, or 12 minutes late, or 13 minutes late. So while the financial impact to them with penalties is incurring, is that something the Transportation Coordinator is working with Durham so they can try to find solutions to that tardiness of the, or the continuation of that tardiness?
Yes, I think the...it truly is an ongoing process, but yes is the answer.
Okay. And then in addition to that, the information is being fed by the schools. Is that correct? Not looking at the GPS given to us from Durham?
As far as lateness, each principal fills that sheet out based on what happens each day at the building.
Correct. And then the Transportation Coordinator is coordinating that information in any situation where it is occurring back to Durham on that same day?
We actually, we meet with Durham every Wednesday, and we call them on a daily basis, so it's almost, almost real time.
Okay. Because I believe the contract states that we have to notify them within a certain amount of time.
Three days.
Yeah, right, within like, what, three days, right? So I just want to make sure that that's occurring as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, next up, let's see. We also, per your policy amendment, we're able to help some folks who are outside of the regular walking zone. I wanted to report back on what's happened so far. So far, we've been able to help 13 individuals. We have seven on Shelter Ave who are outside the zone who now can ride, three at the High School on Staples Road, one at McCourt on Menden Road, one at McCourt on John Street, and one at BF on Abbott Street. So should more folks think they, you know, have an interest, they can certainly contact us and we can see if we can get them on. So we have 13 so far. Next up, we have another vaccination clinic promotion, Wednesday, November 17th. This is the flu clinic, 4 to 7 p.m., and it's the Cumberland High School cafeteria. I got my flu shot at the 1/25th. There was no line, you can get right in and get your flu shot. So that's on the 17th, 4 to 7 o'clock. Next up, in your, also in your drives, you now have the COVID report, and we did actually amend it again mid-afternoon, and it's now by school by month as you had it last year. So it's a quick tally, if I can take you through a couple of them. As you can see here, we'll start at Ashton. You can see Ashton, September, had four cases, only one more case in October, so you know, they're down four, toward a one. BF Norton went from six to seven cases, so they had, you know, they went up. Community School, eight, and then 10 cases. Skipping down to Garvin, three, then five. Cumberland Hill, 12, and down to four. Overall, looking at a tally, 52 cases in September, 36 in October, so certainly a good, a good trend. As far as the adults, seven cases in the first month of the year, only one in October. So overall quarantine, 437 in September, down to 269 in October. So we'll keep looking at that. Currently, the Governor's order goes to 1113. Our neighbors to the north are going until January 15th, I believe, so we're not sure our Governor will, you know, go that far out, but we, our only order, I guess, is when he does extend the orders, it's done kind of at the, at the 11th hour. We don't know it's coming, so we have no notice when it happens, so we'll, you know, keep our ears to the ground. And as you do know, if they don't extend, it's in my hands until the next meeting of the School Committee. So we would bring it to you on November 18th, I believe, if it didn't extend. I think that's the meeting date. So that would be something you would see.
Mr. Collins?
Speaking of the Governor's announcements, yesterday, he made an announcement of the Test and Stay Program in Westerly. So a member of the community reached out to me. They were confused by the test and stay that's being piloted in Westerly, which is designed to keep kids, you know, I think of my kids getting, having to pick my kids up because they have symptoms, so they'd be able to test and stay. So I explained to him that it's different than the announcement that came out that schools are going to be participating in the weekly testing. So children at NCMS, I'm not sure if it's other schools, have been asked parents either to opt-in or opt-out. Could you explain the weekly testing, what the purpose is and what parents' rights are?
It's actually through a grant through the federal government, and we have two testing teams we've hired. So each team has four schools, one day a week each school, I believe, 8 to 11 a.m., and the parents must opt-in. The goal is obviously to just, you know, test samples of our population in the schools because the DOH wants to keep track of just, you know, cases in schools. Should in that same instance, we have a situation where someone is positive and they have already opted in, they could certainly also get tested too, so it would serve that purpose. We don't have the really, you know, a test and stay protocol right now in Cumberland. It's just a pilot in Westerly right now, but I imagine it'll go well. The data came out fairly well in our neighboring states to the north, so I don't see why you wouldn't see more of that in Rhode Island going forward.
Do you have any...so the purpose is, when it comes to the weekly testing, the state wants data. So are they trying to keep, do they see this as a more accurate, instead of reported cases? It'll give you an idea of how many kids truly have?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
So when would the testing take place during the school day? What classes would they be taken from?
From 8 to 11 a.m. is when the team would be at the building, so it would be built in discretion how they would operationalize that.
So would students lose any instructional time if they opted in?
Yes, they could.
Okay.
Ms. Smith?
My last item, School Construction Update.
I'm sorry, I have another question on that. Thank you very much. The numbers on the positive case, positive cases, it's looking very good for us. We're well below that 100 as the Governor has always wanted with, you know. So that's great. The number of those that are being put into quarantine, it just, it's just so high, and I'm just wondering, are these situations that we have just someone in a classroom and there was quarantines related to the classroom, or are we primarily looking at those numbers because of the busing regulations with the state?
It can actually be both, but actually with busing, we have an update. If we have another adult on a bus, a bus monitor, and windows are open, students are wearing masks, then we no longer have to quarantine on buses. So we do have a list of buses with TAs, so that's a good thing. So now, if we do have that adult protocol being followed, masking windows, no quarantining on the buses, so it should go down further. That's encouraging. But yeah, to answer your question, it's both. It's on buses right now and in classrooms.
Right, because that was our understanding, and we've been hearing, I think from parents more than anything, is the students on buses are the ones that are being quarantined the most, and maybe they're at the five feet versus the six feet, and there's all those questions. So knowing this new information, that's very good, and hopefully all those bus monitors will get filled in and maybe perhaps start getting looked at in a better light.
Sure. I'd also add, in talking to superintendents this morning, in a meeting, two have been approached already in parts of the state that have low vaccination rates to plan their clinics for the 11 and under. So the state's already reaching out. It's either a local EMI, EMA decision or a state decision, but the places that are low vaccination are already being targeted for dates in early November. So I think we'll get contacted fairly soon for dates for our younger kids, so that's encouraging.
We have a high distribution rate.
Our rate is higher. I think with last look at the high school, around 58%. I don't have the elementary in my head. We have a decent number. It could be higher, but yeah, we're not as low as some other places.
And I believe that the state level, the high school age difference, we're above the norm of what's been happening, so that's positive.
To mention my last item, the School Construction Update. So the new nurse's office and main office upstairs here in the trans is complete. We're moving in. Last step is Monday. We have to wait till Monday for the fire marshal inspection, but everything is done. I can give you a tour later if you want to see the space. The floor is in. It looks really sharp, so that's encouraging. The space for the Tony De Monica's team is about two weeks out. Walls are done, ceiling done. Just the flooring goes in, I believe, Tuesday. That's about two weeks. New asphalt went in today between the main building and the wellness center, so that's been completed. New entryway at the High School now is functional. We do have the buzzer working, so we'll be moving the offices down there from the High School. Cameras are being completed over the next couple of days. Playground is still being installed, so that's encouraging. They can pour the rubber surface even when it gets a little chillier out, so we have time still to get that completed. That's, that's good news. In Cumberland Hill, the only big change from last time I talked to you was just still the foundation. If you go back there, I can show it to you, but it's nothing too exciting, but they're finishing the back wall of the foundation. The two sides are done. Now they're doing the back wall. So that's the construction update. If you want any tours, let me know. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Dr. Thornton. Next on the agenda is Report of Standing Committees, starting with the Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The fiscal committee, subcommittee met this evening. We have seven resolutions, one old, six new. Later on, we discussed a number of different topics, and we just alluded to the Durham bus issue. I think it was really important. One of the concerns a couple, you know, a month or so ago was, you know, when you speak to members of the community, there's like, well, this, you know, you're not going to take care of it. How long are you going to drag this on? So we put it on the agenda tonight to really get the ball rolling, to at least get us a financial impact study. One thing that we discovered that, in order to add buses, we're looking at about $70,000 a year per bus, and this becomes complicated because you have to maximize utilization. So if we get, add an extra bus for, say, BF Norton, and we don't, we only use it for, you know, two routes a day for BF Norton, we have to figure out ways to maximize our usage. Ms. Smith presented some plans to maybe take a look at all the buses. We're still waiting for data, you know, bus capacity, how much a bus is being used. It is going to be difficult to change the bus routes this year. We don't want to, you know, create chaos, but we have gotten the ball rolling with financial studies, and it sounds like, even though this is really not a fiscal matter, there are people who have started utilizing, well, 13 total, who have started utilizing the superintendent's executive power in order to accommodate people on a case-by-case basis. So, and then we just have a series of resolutions and an amended school budget later on. So I don't think, that's, nothing else. So we'll be talking about a lot of this stuff later, so.
All right, thank you. Ms. Smith?
I'm sorry, are we going to talk about that further, on that transportation discussion? Was that going to be it? Because I just wanted to...
Feel free to add, yeah. I'm sorry if I missed anything.
You didn't miss anything, really. I just wanted to reference that Durham has already been contacted. Dr. Thornton and his team have already been speaking with Durham to do a full reassessment with information being given, and we've updated that information to potentially include depot stops in different areas or for different ages, and looking at the whole package. Durham has already advised that will be several months to do that assessment before it will even come in to look at the fiscal, the fiscal part of it. So, so it is being worked on. It is as, probably as we discussed in the policy meetings last month as well, it is going to take months to work on this, and it is something that we are going to be continuing with.
All right, thank you. Next is the Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorello?
Yes, Policy and Procedures did not meet this week. We will be meeting on November, I have no idea. Second?
Did you?
No, we're not.
It's 16th.
16th.
You know, you know.
Thank you. All right, next is Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update. We did not meet this week, but we are meeting Tuesday at 5:30 with one main agenda item, which is the SO3 funds and the strategies for how we plan on allocating those funds. Yes, Mr. Collins?
And it's not too late also, perhaps, to add the, obviously it's not on our agenda this evening, but RICAS data came out, so.
We may be able to add just a high-level overview of that while...
Maybe you just have a subsequent meeting later on in the month, because it's kind of...
Yeah, oh, for sure. Yeah, yeah. Mr. DeVon is doing that work. Okay. And next is District Health and Wellness Subcommittee Update. Mrs. Rogalski?
The District Health and Wellness Policy Committee met in September. We actually had an update from Karen Weatherill from Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition, as well as Shauna Spillane from Tedexo on an exciting farm-to-school pilot program they're going to be implementing in the district for this year. I believe we were one of two schools chosen in the state for the pilot program. It's done through a grant from the USDA obtained by RICAS, DEM, Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition, and some others. Basically, there are going to be efforts in the schools to, and granted, our schools have already done a phenomenal job of eating healthy, eating locally, but it's really going to kind of help to make the connections with kids to, you know, how good it is to eat local and to use local products from local farms. And so there's going to be signage and fun things, costumes are involved for some people. But that's going to be starting. They rolled it out, actually, the next thing. Several members of the committee and of the school department did attend a statewide breakfast for local health and wellness leaders down in Warwick, and they rolled out the program there as well. So it's going to be neat to see and kind of that stress on that local farm-to-table and farm-to-community for not just students, but also staff and community members as well, even trying to get some people into the schools from the community for special events and such. We also began working on some changes for the health and wellness policy, yet more changes that will probably reflect what we are accurately doing in the schools right now. And we continued our discussion on a resources document. The topic of mental health is foremost on, I think, everyone's minds, but not just for students, but also for teachers and staff. And so we're working on a resources document for teachers and staff to help them have some physical, social, and emotional needs addressed.
Thank you. Looking forward to the farm-to-table. Now, is that in all schools?
There were two kits sent out to the district, but there's going to be some aspect of it in every school, yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is our public hearing for policies. Mr. Fiorello, do you want to take this?
I would ask about the District Wellness Policy, I-1 and A-6, the Special Needs Inclusion Policy, both be read into the record. Just to be clear, it is the first reading of the Special Needs Inclusion Policy, and that'll take two readings before we can actually vote on it.
Okay. And we do, in this section, have a public comments, but this public comments is related to those two policies? So if anyone from the public wishes to speak on those two policies, you can come up to the microphone. Okay, all right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the Open Comments from the Public. So if anyone from the public would like to come up and speak on any topic, please state your name and your address, and just know that we have a three-minute time limit.
Hey, good evening. My name is Antonio Pavlakos. I live at 57 Baloo here in Cumberland, and I'm here because I'm a divorced parent and my child is being denied the right to take a bus to each of her households. She's told she can only take one. You may be familiar, we were on an email thread with my ex-wife and Tracy from Durham a few weeks back, and just hoping to get some clarification as to why, because it seems like Durham is kind of putting it on the School Committee, the School Committee is putting it on Durham. And, you know, either way, you know, I have split custody with my ex-wife. We've had this scheduled for five years. It's a very consistent schedule, every other week, and she's been told that she cannot take a bus to both my house as well as to her mother's house. And, I mean, I can see the concept of possibly contact tracing, however, I think that would be fairly simple. We have, you know, very smart 13-year-olds, we have educated teachers. She's either on Bus A or Bus B, and maybe that's not the reasoning, but I don't think we've actually got a reasoning. It's kind of been pushed back and forth. Oh, it's Durham, Tracy says. You guys, you know, oh, it's the School Committee. Do we have any, you know, a better explanation as to why, as a taxpayer, you know, as divorced parents, we should have buses to both households? Why, one, we either have to, I don't know if we have to get, you know, an attorney or come a little further into this, cost us a lot of money, or put her in after-school care, because I'm late for work a lot of times in the morning because I have to take her there. Afternoons, got to leave early because I have to get her in certain places. And it's, you know, I understand that, you know, everything needs to be protected and, you know, contact traced, but I feel it's a very easy, easy situation, and we'd just like to know, because if we do have to put her in after-school care, she takes another bus to Alphabet. So to me, I mean, you don't know what the kids are doing on the weekends, you don't know what they're doing their evenings. And, you know, when they're on a bus going to Alphabet, I guess it's hired by them. Is this a liability issue through the School Committee or the School Department, or is this an actual safety measure put in place?
I can speak to you after the meeting, but I can't respond to public comment, but if you stick around, I can talk to you.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay. The next item on the agenda is Old Business, and the first item is Discussion and or Vote on Appointment of School Committee Clerk. So you may recall from the last meeting that in the interim, I delegated the responsibilities to Ms. Smith, who happily accepted them. And tonight, I am looking for a motion to... Yes, Mr. Collins?
Madam Chair, if, Ms. Smith, if you're willing to answer, are you willing to take on this responsibility? I know you, she delegated, but now for the full-time position, are you willing?
I am willing to take on that responsibility to the liking of the rest of the committee members.
All right, that being said, I'll make a motion to nominate Ms. Smith as our committee clerk.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Fiorello. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it six to zero. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Five to zero. I abstain for my own vote.
Oh, you can vote for yourself.
Oh, okay. I...
We're going to take that six to zero. And thank you very much, Ms. Smith, for stepping up into this important role. The next item on the agenda, Discussion and or Vote to Approve Resolution. Mr. Collins, would you like to take this?
I will. So we had this last week. This is the DIRT resolution, as we call it, but this is SCPR-10-2021-74. A resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve a payment for HV Collins of Providence, Rhode Island, for a change order up to $70,000 to remove and replace excavated dirt that two geotech firms have recommended. The two firms have concerns with the composition of the excavated dirt not being suitable for use to build an addition for J.J.M. Cumberland Hill Elementary School without certain treatment that would take time to complete and in turn delay the project. And this is obviously coming out of the $79 million bond. The issue at hand was first, the fact that it had not gone through the Building Committee. We looked into that. The Building Committee had not met. The primary concern right now for, for the project is that not having that dirt removed will inhibit the ability for the project to proceed on time. I will also add that last week when we tabled this, the original price tag was $100,000, and it is now, it has been negotiated down to $70,000. And we have, we were sent a copy of a contract. We are responsible, I believe, for anything over 12 yards, 10 to 12 yards, and this is well over that. So we have documentation that we are on the hook for this dirt. Ideally, with the things like this change orders, we've discussed this before, and this has been an ongoing thing, we would like to see the Building Committee approve things. That's ways to clean process that if ever there was any issue. But it's my understanding that the issue right now, there are members of the Building Committee that are just more concerned about getting the project done. But I think moving forward, you know, it's $70,000 now, but we want to make sure that we have enough money to finish all the projects in the end. So this is small potatoes, you know, in relation to the overall scope of all the projects, but it's very important that we go through with change orders and we follow through a process and we don't rush them through.[1755.04] we follow through a process and we don't rush them through. So that being said, it did pass fiscal subcommittee two to one this evening, and I would like to make a motion to move passage of the resolution.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Fiorello for a discussion.
Yeah, as you know, I'm a member of the building committee. We've had a discussion at the last building committee meeting, how we wanted to handle change orders, small dollar amounts, they're okay with just having them lumped together and we can do it. The building committee really doesn't want to meet more than once a month, and they are very cogn- cogn- cognizant, thank you, of holding up the project. So, and this is something that, again, absolutely has to get done. Easily, we can vote on it here, pass it, and send it to the building committee for their blessing also. But this has to get done, otherwise it's going to prolong the project, and we don't want to end up in July rushing to finish up everything. And that being said also, there's also a possibility that some of that dirt may be removed without having to pay for it. So it may actually reduce the cost of it. There's still some ability to, you know, move some of that dirt around town or wherever, so.
Other discussion, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. So when we discuss this in fiscal tonight and did take our vote on it, I did vote against it for the sole reason, not related to the urgency of it and the fact that we do want to stay on schedule. I completely understand that. But as you just discussed, this isn't a small number. This isn't just a $5,000 or $10,000 change order. This is something that could potentially also get us at every other school. So if it's $70,000 now at Cumberland Hill, what's going to happen is we go into other schools. I know that Mr. Pregnato did tell us in the last meeting that they were going to be looking at those other schools early enough so that we don't find a last-minute change. The school committee at this time, and I think the fiscal subcommittee as well, we don't, we don't see all those invoices and know all of those steps that are being taken with the building committee. So we're a second layer to all of it. So the information that we're getting is typically the approval from the building committee. They've reviewed the scope of the work, they've looked at all the questions, they have all the details being provided to them. At this time, this $70,000, we have nothing. The fact that we've just found out from Mr. Fiorello that some of it may be removed at no cost, we don't even have that in front of us. We've had discussions that perhaps somebody could use it, but, you know, what is it going to be? Is the $70,000 inclusive of removing the dirt, all the equipment to remove it, how far we have to track and bring that dirt? Right now, I believe some is going to Johnston. And then the replacement of that dirt with the proper dirt. These are all things that we don't have access to ask those kind of questions, and we haven't had it detailed in front of us. So while there's urgency, I'm remiss to vote in favor of this and set a precedence that we're just receiving information and doing that here at the school committee before the proper channels have really reviewed it. And I think, as we've discussed, and maybe it's something that needs to go back to the building committee, there are going to be, as needed, important meetings for change orders that we can't wait for a month. So we've got to find a better way, I think, to work with each other so that we're not scrambling and, at the same time, we're not holding up a project. So if there's a concern that we're holding up the payment or this approval, my concern is, well, why hasn't it been that urgent with the building committee? And I don't want that to sound negative in any way to the building committee. There's a lot of work that's been done. We need to find a better mix there so that we don't have that happen again, and we don't have it come to us before the building committee has all of the answers. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion to approve SCPR-1021-74 change order for Cumberland Hill School, H.V. Collins, the dirt resolution, and we have a second by Mr. Fiorello. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it five to one. Next item on the agenda, it says discussion and/or vote, or it's really a discussion because it's the first reading. Mr. Fiorello, would you like to take this?
Yes. As you know, this is the inclusion policy that we've been working on for probably a year and a half. This was first written by Kyle Santos, who was one of our coordinators at the time, who unfortunately has left us for another district. Not because she, it was a much better job offer. So it was the next step in her career. We wish her well. This policy really just mirrors a lot of language that is in federal law. However, there have been times over the years where teachers or staff or PTOs have neglected to include special education students. And so we put a policy together just so that it's all very clear, everything's in writing as to what the expectations are. You know, it's simple things in a lot of ways, where it could be, you know, at a school dance, you may have a quiet room where kids are playing board games so that kids can, you know, be with the bulk of the group. But if they need a timeout to kind of have a quiet space, they can go into the other room and be with other students. And what they found with this is it's not just the special ed students that are going into that room, it's a lot of kids that'll go into that room just to be able to wind down for a little bit. Also, on field trips, we need to make sure that we have handicap accessible buses, and that is a responsibility of the PTOs to pay for, as they are paying for other, you know, the close-by field trips. So these are all the things that are supposed to be done anyways, but we have put it into a policy to really spell it out for people. And it's been vetted by many groups over the last year. Special education parents are very much behind this. Dr. Santa and all of her team have been working on it as well. And I believe it is ready for passage finally. So I don't know if you want to have just a preemptive vote?
Well, it does still need a second reader, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and then we would vote?
Exactly.
Okay. So this was just the discussion of that. Sounds like you've made a lot of great progress on this.
Yeah, Kyle Santos and Dr. Santa have done all the work, really.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any questions or comments for Mr. Fiorello? All right, next item on the agenda is discussion and/or vote to approve the amended policy, the I-1 district wellness policy.
I will happily hand this over to Mrs. Rogalski, as she is the chair of the Health and Wellness Policy Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. We're very happy to have this finally coming to the full committee. The last update to the health and wellness policy was in 2015, and it is supposed to be roughly every three years, so we were quite overdue. I fully admit I was not involved in these changes. It happened before I took over chairmanship of the committee, so that I would like to thank everyone on the committee before me who did all of the work. There are some changes, there aren't many. A lot of them are administrative, updating outdated website links, adding website links where we needed to have them, referencing Rhode Island general law where it was required. There were, there's one change to allow the committee to invite the new members of the schools and community to join the committee, just putting up, just putting into the policy that we're going to have an annual communication going out to everyone so that we can kind of open membership of the committee to those who are interested in joining. Other, other changes, we're updating language to be in compliance with the USDA School Meals Program, which we are part of with the school. So we had to be in compliance with that. But that covers the majority, I think that covers every change that was in here. We are working on other ones down the road, but this one was mainly administrative changes, small legal changes and such, and compliance changes.
So we can vote on this policy tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion.
I will just look at it. I know that Mrs. Bernardo, the former chair of the committee, had worked on this with Mrs. Carbonic and Mrs. Malcolm, but unfortunately, due to COVID and this very strange hectic meeting schedules we've had in the previous year, it was never able to be voted on. So I just wanted to point that out. It's on, you know, we wanted to have this policy voted on, it just was never able to happen, unfortunately. But I would make a motion to approve this policy.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve I-1 district wellness policies. Ms. Smith seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it six to zero. Thank you for all of that work. The next item on the agenda is new business, and the first item is discussion and/or vote to approve the proposed collective bargaining agreement with the independent Cumberland School Employees, also known as ICSI. And we did discuss this in exec, and, you know, we were pleased that the two groups were able to come to agreement, the union and the administration. I don't know, Dr. Thornton, if there's anything you'd like to add?
No, Madam Chair, just looking for a vote in open. Thank you.
All right, so we need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion by Mr. Collins.
I just want to point out that this is very encouraging, because given all we're going through right now, if this passes, as I suspect it will tonight, that means everybody will currently be under contract in the district. I think that's outstanding, and that's especially under the current circumstances with everything going on, that we were able to accomplish it is no small feat. So well done to people who were involved in the negotiations.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fiorello, a second by Mr. Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it six to zero. Congratulations, and thank you for everyone's efforts. The next item on the agenda is discussion and/or vote to approve a one-time 1% salary payment to G6 employees, consistent with the CTA and the ICSI employees. Dr. Thornton?
Madam Chair, this is on for the school committee consideration, knowing that you have settled both contracts with that one-time payment. To me, it was the right thing to do, to bring this in front of the committee for consideration. G6, as you know, all of our principals, administrators, I know sometimes that group can be, you know, not forgotten but kind of like not thought of, you know, first, if you will. I think, to me, it's the right thing to do to bring it in front of you, and it is in the budget. It's a $28,000 number that Miss Bernardo brought to you, I think, two fiscal meetings ago. So it is budgeted. Thank you.
And Dr. Thornton, you said there was a start date for that?
Yes, only those administrators who are working prior to July 1st. They were already on the books in June.
Which does not include you.
I'm not part of this, Mr. Fiorello.
Does not include Dr. Thornton. Okay. Motion by Mr. DeMonica.
Second for discussion.
Second by Mr. Collins for discussion.
This is another group, especially the principals. I don't think people realize what they do behind the scenes. You know, you, you don't understand their work, their 10, 12-hour workday, and, you know, anytime there's a complaint, it's, well, talk to your building principal, talk to your building principal, not just managing personnel, curriculum, students, issues that arise. I think it's important, we have a lot of talent with our administrative team that I can see, and I think this is a small gesture. I wish it could be more. Unfortunately, that's not realistic. So hopefully, they are encouraged by it, and I appreciate the committee taking this up. This is, I think, a nice gesture.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. DeMonica and a second by Mr. Collins. Any other discussion? Oh, Ms. Smith.
I believe that we are going to be speaking further around G6 with changes within the policy itself within a few weeks at our, at our next meeting. So while this is good, I think that we still have some open discussions where this 1% could be changing on some different levels to bring them in line. I think there were several groups that weren't...
That's a different discussion, Ms. Smith. This is a one-time 1% salary payment.
That's what I want to make sure that we're going to have the separate discussion in two weeks, and it will be separated.
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. DeMonica, second by Mr. Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is discussion and/or vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 2021-2022 school year.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Rogalski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it six to zero. The next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve resolutions. Mr. Collins?
I have resolutions, everybody's favorite. That's where everybody came, I know. First up, in addition, we had the old resolution earlier that passed. But next, we have SCPR-10-2021-75, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve the following invoices for payment to Colliers for September 2021 in the amount of $47,490.03. The invoices are in the folder, and this is coming from the $79 million bond. This passed fiscal subcommittee this evening three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-10-2021-75. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorello and Mr. DeMonica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have SCPR-10-2021-76, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve a payment for H.V. Collins of Providence, Rhode Island, for payment two for September 2021 invoice for J.J.M. Cumberland Hill Elementary School in an amount not to exceed $294,068. This is also coming out of the bond, and this also passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-10-2021-76. Second by Mrs. Rogalski and Mr. DeMonica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it six to zero.
Next, we have SCPR-10-2021-77, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve a payment for H.V. Collins of Providence for payment three for September 2021 invoice for the high school swing space in an amount not to exceed $613,104. Again, this is coming out of the $79 million bond. This passed fiscal subcommittee this evening three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-10-2021-77. Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it six to zero.
Next, we have SCPR-10-2021-78, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to authorize payment number four to E&amp;E Systems of Canton, Mass. for unit ventilator installation of 25 unit vents at the CHS main building in an amount not to exceed $5,958.64. This leaves a balance of $42,943.17 remaining on the $858,863.38 contract. This passed fiscal subcommittee this evening three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-10-2021-78. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogalski and Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it six to zero.
Next, we have SCPR-10-2021-79, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to authorize payment number four to E&amp;E Systems of Canton, Mass. for unit ventilators installation of 21 unit vents at the CHS transitional building in an amount not to exceed $5,958.64. This leaves a balance of $32,853.42 remaining on the $657,068.44 contract. This passed fiscal, this is coming out of the bond, this passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-10-2021-79. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogalski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it six to zero.
And finally, we have SCR-2021-04, a resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to amend the 2021 to 2022 budget from $74,392,284 to $75,383,391, an increase of $991,107,000. Does anybody have any questions about this? This passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero this evening, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCR-2021-04. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Second by Mr. DeMonica. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Collins. And next, we have discussion and/or vote to approve payment of bills. Back to you, Mr. Collins. Do we have any payment of bills tonight?
I'm sorry. No, there were no bills paid this evening.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is school committee comments. Okay, Mrs. Rogalski.
I actually have three. First, I want to say that I got, I think, a few of us attended the trunk-or-treat in the high school parking lot this evening, and it was wonderful. It was very well attended, just very creative, just a fantastic job by the student, I believe it's the student government at the high school, really, really spectacular event. So I hope several people from the community got to go out and celebrate it. Second, I want to congratulate Kylie DeFusco, who was the freshman state champion in girls' cross-country this past weekend at freshman state championships. And I want to wish all of our sports teams good luck as they head into... good luck as they head into playoff season.
Excellent, thank you. Any other school committee comments? No. Okay. The next item on the agenda is vote to go into executive session. Dr. Thornton?
All set, Madam Chair.
Okay, next item on the agenda is adjournment. Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins and Mrs. Rogalski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it six to zero. We are adjourned at 7:59 PM. Thank you, everyone.